Monthly meeting with the quorum being present. The meeting was called order at six o'clock tonight, and we immediately convened an executive session to discuss the employment and medical history, hiring and discipline of particular persons. At this time, I'd like to call for motion second to end the executive session and return to the open session.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Peters, second, Mrs. Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. Budge of the.
Budge of the. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vocal?
Ms. Berry.
Here.
Ms. Oswald Davies. Excuse me. Ms. Graves.
Here.
Mr. Hamilton. Excuse me. Ms. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
And Mr. Webberly.
Okay. Motion to approve the agenda as written.
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell. Second, Mrs. Graves. All in favor?
Aye.
And. Motion to approve the village of the September tenth regular monthly meeting is written in. Oh, correct.
No, no, the one update on Haley.
Oh, yeah, yes. I got it on one, but I don't have it on the one that was printed out with the update on Haley Park. Motion. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Graves. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. See.
Right here.
Yes, right here.
She's right here in center.
Okay. Front and center. Front and center for last time for here. We want to recognize Shannon Rabidu for her eighteen years of service to the district, our students, our staff and community. And Mrs. Rabidu has previously employed at Peru from two thousand three to two thousand sixteen. She rejoined the Peru Central School family in December of two thousand nineteen as the Director of Student Services in addition to the current director. Hold on to this one, okay? She served in many roles over the years, including health medical administrator, elementary teacher, summer camp teacher, CSE, CPSE chair, NASA team leader, election inspector, categorical grants administrator coordinator for a grade level student accident ADA, an officer of our Medicaid services Title Nine and pandemic safety compliance. Okay. I don't think I better tell NCCS that one. Ms. Rabidu has recently accepted a position with Northeastern Clinton Central School, and congratulations to her and best wishes in all your future endeavors. I won't have Josh read the. Josh and Rob read all those. He'll have new jobs up there. Okay.
Next one. We're going to recognize Board of Education members for their dedication to children, learning and the community, and their devotion to many hours of service to the elementary and secondary public education as they continually strive for improvement, excellence and progress in education. Our board leaders respond to educational needs in our community and doing so help strengthen New York State's education system and improve the future prospects of our children. This year, October fourteenth through the eighteenth of two thousand twenty-four is recognition, school board recognition week. So thank you for all the hard work that you do, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you all very much. Okay. I didn't have anything on Peru comments, and I don't think we have anybody signed up.
We only have Dr. David, but he's not quite scheduled yet.
We'll get to it. We're going to put you at the end of the.
Perfect.
So you can see how. Right now, which is wonderful, we have time to hear from our student council.
Good evening, Mr. Storms, administration and board members. Sorry, usually I dress up for this, but I just got back from a cross-country meeting.
You're not adequate. If you're in anything like that, don't think that you have to do that. We appreciate seeing the sports.
The high school student council has been extremely busy with planning Homecoming two thousand twenty-four. This is a favorable event as it incorporates the entire district. All grade levels and buildings actively participate in Spirit Week. It's a week of unity, school spirit and Peru pride. This year, our theme is holidays. Each high school class will be transforming their hallway into a decorative oasis based on their holiday. Seniors have Halloween, juniors have Christmas, sophomores have Fourth of July, and freshmen will decorate for New Year's. We are looking forward to our parade and having the primary and intermediate students celebrate with us. A lot of planning, time and work goes into pulling it off. We appreciate the support of all administrators and staff members in making this event memorable. Student Council is also preparing for an event to raise funds for the Christopher Garo Memorial Scholarship. There will be a raffle baskets of fifty-fifty at the soccer games on Friday. On Saturday, there will be many flag football games to support the cause. This event will conclude with the Peru varsity football game. Finally, we would like to thank administration for allowing students to go on the three-day Sweethearts and Heroes Leadership Summit in Killington, Vermont. It was a very wonderful experience. Those who attended were able to connect with each other and students from other areas schools. This event concluded with the Spartan Race. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
So next, we have my report, and the good news is I don't have a lot to talk about tonight because we have so many guests and so many different reports that are going to be happening tonight. So we are going to be welcoming our partners from CDES, Dr. Davy and Dr. Slattery. So let you start, Mr. Dr. Davy.
Okay.
Say, we didn't know.
I was just settling in for the.
You're welcome. And you're welcome.
Perfect. And good evening. Board President Barry, Vice President Mitchell, members of the board. Ms. Fouls. Superintendent Janovich Boyer. Members of your administrative team, teaching staff, and I think maybe your student did leave, but hey, students and everyone this evening. Thank you for the opportunity for CVS to come back and share a few insights tonight. I have brought a special guest who you're very familiar with, and he's a member of our senior administrative team, Dr. Matthew Slattery, who is our Executive Director of Special Education. So we're very excited tonight to share some insights about our special education program. I know that you sent a number of students to us. I want to thank your Director of Special Education, who is now, you know, moving to a different position, but thank you for all of your service in Rabidu along the way. It's been a pleasure having you work with Dr. Slattery as well as as a member of, you know, that collaborative work. So thank you. You've really made a tremendous impact. This evening, I'm just going to share a few updates. First, however, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Mr. Storms as your superintendent. I had the privilege, I know you've been a dedicated leader in the Peru Central School District for many years. Administrator, however, isn't through the ranks, but also as a superintendent, you have really shown. And I had the fortune of working with the board a few years ago as that hiring process unfolded, and you have been doing an amazing job ever since. So, Mr. Storms, it's been a privilege and pleasure to work with you. You are a leader at the table of our chief school officers. Your insights are very valuable. You represent your students, your board and your district in the highest regard, and it is a true pleasure to work with you and have you at the table. You're a great colleague and a friend, and we look forward to our continued work together.
Thanks, Paul.
Yes. So this evening, I'm going to share just a few highlights about our update, and then really, I'm here to have Dr. Slattery share an overview about our special education program and some highlights that, you know, he's very excited and pleased to share. And I'm truly excited as well. With that said, just a couple of updates. You do have in your folder your regular fact sheets. You also have a summary sheet, and I handed out a number of those packets to everyone, which provides an overview about and a summary about the CVS services, your proposed or projected current aid ratio. Fouls, you're familiar, that's not quite locked in, but it's close. But it is close. With that being said, you see all of the different services that are provided. An acknowledgement, Mrs. Friedman is not here with this evening as our Executive Director of CD Tech. However, you are a very strong supporter of sending students to CD Tech. This year, at this time, and the numbers as confirmed today are one hundred and eleven students. So thank you for your support. We've had tremendous interest in our career and tech programs, and you're a very strong supporter, and we appreciate that. And we want to meet your students' needs, your parents' needs, but also be a really significant value for your district so that, you know, we're really providing the best services possible. Again, we utilize the five-year CTE averaging, which is helpful, and there's other, many other options, and you're familiar with those as well. The special education program that Dr. Slattery is here to speak about this evening, it lists thirteen of the students at this time. He will actually explain the different programs as well and really give you some insight about really the uniqueness and specialty of our programs and the high caliber staff and programming of the offer. Lastly, you also see the school support services known as S3 and all the different areas from our instructional technology, arts and ed, and we can go right down the list. We employ self-health, safety, risk management, and so on and so forth. The interscholastic sports, and then the contracted services, the bottom line. As, and Barry, you're very familiar with this entire list. Peru is a strong supporter of CVS, one of our strongest. And we value that recognition. We value that support, and we want to deliver high value and, you know, really your financial worth in those services every single day. That's one of our areas that we work very hard to do. I know if there are questions that come up, we're happy to come and share and give feedback and have an open dialogue, and we honor and value that relationship. We don't ever want to do anything to jeopardize it, so we want to continue to maintain the highest level of support and service, and we look forward to doing that with you. So at this point, I'm going to transition to the sharing of Dr. Slattery, who came from Peru as a principal, who was here as your intermediate, your elementary, multiple years as a principal. We were very fortunate when he joined our team as our Director of Special Education. He started his career with us many years ago as well for his first year in teaching. So we've got strong roots and strong ties. He's also fortunate to have, and we're very honored and pleased to recognize him as Dr. Slattery, where he defended his dissertation this past year, last year. So he's really invested in himself, but also in our programming and our support, and he's in his fifth year with us as well and doing a great job. So it is my privilege and pleasure to turn the floor over to Dr. Matthew Slattery, our Executive Director. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see so many familiar faces. So today's presentation really is about everything that we do at the Rise Center for Success and the vital resource that we provide to the region. Appreciate this opportunity to talk about it. Should be about fifteen minutes. First half is going to be more qualitative than what we do. Last part will be quantitative, and then we'll finish with some field developments. So that. Okay. What is the Rise Center for Success? Oh, there we go. Thank you. So what is Rise Center for Success? So we are the Special Education Division of CVS. We serve as a premier provider of special education services across the region. Our job is to specialize in meeting the needs of students with moderate to more severe disabilities. We do this through the BOSI's model. We do this through four main program lanes, is what I like to call them, with the destination of post-secondary success. So now, you're probably wondering, why do districts look to use us, to us, provide these services? Well, we offer programs and services that districts cannot. That's the niche. That's the function of what we do as a BOSI's. Peru Central School District, second largest district in the region, has a pretty robust special education program, but you may not have a student population to meet all of your student needs. Us as a BOSI's, we're pulling from a greater region. We have twenty-two different component districts that send students to us. We have sixteen component districts in our region, but they send students to us because of the highly individualized specialization that we provide to students. So if you think of our four program lanes, they're created based on needs from the region. And so a good example of that, last year, I met with our directors of special education across the region. We were fortunate enough to be able to open up two more sections, and I said, hey, what do you guys need in terms of services? And based on their input, we're able to open up another section of autism and another section of ITSP. We do this because of what's called FAB, or Free and Appropriate Public Education. This is federal legislation that really is why, really protects students with disabilities in terms of giving them an education that's appropriate for their needs. Without FAB, that would be a one-size-fits-all, and we know that's not what students need. So with that, how do we specialize? I talk a lot about that. We have two hundred and twenty-five staff members that each are super important to the success of each of our students. We approach our students in multidisciplinary teams and have approximately twenty titles within those two hundred and twenty-five staff members. Our focus is always on post-secondary success, whether a child is with us as a five-year-old or graduating and leaving our hallways as a twenty-two-year-old. We do this through tailored supports to help students overcome barriers that they have in their lives. A really good example of this is specialized behavioral supports. We have three outstanding VCBAs, board-certified behavioral analysts, and three RBTs, registered behavioral technicians. They work very closely with our educational teams, creating a plan with fidelity to help students internalize that plan so they can build independence and really navigate those barriers that are interfering, you know, with their access to meaningful relationships in education. We develop programs through partnerships. I have some on the board. I'm not going to talk about them all, but the New England Center for Children is a great example. They're located out of Worcester, Massachusetts, world-renowned for working with students and adults with autism. We started our autism program eight years ago with two sections. With their help, we have grown to seven sections. That's classrooms. When I talk about sections, our seven sections are full. And so relying on our partnerships to continue the evolution of our programming is so, so very important. Then finally, we offer robust training for all of our staff. A good example of this is TCIS two, Therapeutic Crisis Intervention for Schools. The latest version is two, it's more trauma-informed and trauma-based. Peru uses TCIS two as most of our component school districts. We train all of our staff that have contact with students in TCIS two. So whether you're the Executive Director or a teacher in aid, everyone receives training and maintains that certification because we know that's what's best for our students. Now, where are we located? So we have two main campuses. Our Plattsburgh campus servicing our Clinton County schools as well as our Mindville campus with six classrooms on Mindville serving our Essex County schools. You may not know this, but we have two satellite site campuses located at the Plattsburgh City School District. Very grateful for their partnership. Two academic classrooms at PHS followed by two life skills classroom at our Duke Building. Without their partnership and without these classrooms, we would have thirty-two students with disabilities from across the region that would not have access to programming. When students do not have access to program, typically they're on waitlist. Typically, they're receiving home instruction, either two or three hours a day, depending on their age, and that is a far shell of what they should be receiving in terms of their education. And then finally, we have two locations for our adult services branch, Partners in Transition, located at Sibley Hall at SUNY Plattsburgh, and One WorkSource. So now, what programs do we offer at Rise? So we have our eight-one-two academic behavioral program. That ratio at the front means eight students, one teacher, two teaching assistants. Students that are enrolled in our academic behavioral program are performing academically at par with grade-level peers. They are working towards a high school region's diploma and may have some, you know, emotional needs that requires a smaller environment with a focus on counseling. In terms of our next program, and again, I picture this as four-lane highway destination, post-secondary success. Each lane has a different path to get there. Our next program is eight-one-two life skills. This is for students that are typically two years or more below grade-level peers. They are not working towards a region's diploma. Instruction looks more fundamental in terms of mathematics, reading, and then working towards those daily living skills. And as students get older, ages fourteen and up, we're working on navigating our community and really, you know, building those employability skills through our work experience program. Next program is our six-one-three autism. Six students, one teacher, three teaching assistants. I talked about, you know, we started with two sections. We've grown to seven. This is for students diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder, have moderate to more high needs in terms of communication and behavior. We have a social worker fully built into this program. Her role is to work with families to carry over the skill acquisition from the classroom into the home setting. We also have a VCPA and RBT dedicated fully to this program. Their role is to really help shape those behaviors so that students can access that education more readily. Final program is our six-one-one ITSP. This was developed approximately twelve years ago, came from the need, from the need, for the need from the region as a way to keep students with their family to access really the most intensive program that our region offers. Instead of a student going to a residential treatment facility, which is outside of their home, they're able to stay with their family, access this high level of service. We have a pediatric psychiatrist built in that meets with the family and students once a month. We have adventure-based counseling that takes place weekly that culminates in a monthly excursion, typically in the wilderness, and we have a counselor embedded fully into each classroom. Work experience isn't necessarily a program, but all of our students ages really fourteen years and up participate in work experience in some aspect. I could talk to you about work experience for thirty minutes. I won't. I'll give you a quick snapshot on our Plattsburgh campus. The first three on here, Pays Lab, in-house simulated work experience, and Rise and Shine are all in our school setting. And that's very intentional, our end, to create a safe environment, safe and supportive environment where students can learn employability skills, they can get experience on job sites in-house and build confidence for that shift of four and five, which are community-based. So whether it's community outings in terms of volunteering, navigating our community, or actual work sites with the support of our staff, this is the progression that we want for all of our students with the goal of being employable when they leave our halls and graduate or continuing with adult services, working towards employability. Okay. Well, you may not, you may know those things, but you may not know. We also provide eleven attenuate providers across ten of our component, ten of the sixteen component school districts in CBS. These are our OTs, PTs, teacher of the deaf and school psychologists. I mentioned our VCBAs and RBTs on staff just for internal programming. We've had a request to build that out as an attenuate service next year that we're working towards as long as we can staff it. We have a teacher assigned to CVPH, the Child and Adolescent Unit there. So students are hospitalized due to crises that they're experiencing. They still need access to their education. And so our teacher at that site provides instruction in increments required, depending on their age, two to three hours from students all across New York State and really the Northeast, between Vermont and New Hampshire. Annually, we provide extended school year programming for the region. Two campuses, Mindville and Plattsburgh, one hundred and ten students this past school year. And I already mentioned our adult services branch, Partners in Transition. Okay. Rise numbers by, Rise Center by the numbers. Want to talk quantitatively with you. All this data is pulled from our strategic plan. Here, we have an enrollment trends chart with enrollment pulled from October first of each year. You can see a steady and strategic increase over the past five years with enrollment increasing fifty-one percent. We were able to do this really by working with our component districts in the face of a workforce shortage and by securing a different, additional settings to be able to service the needs of our students. Again, we hate it when our kids are on waitlists. We talk to parents. We know what the other options are out there. And so through the efforts of collaborating with our CSOs, our component districts, we're able to, you know, continue to grow right programming for kiddos of the region. It's important for us to know what our students are leaving our division with in terms of a diploma or credential, and then what are they doing after they leave the Rise Center? So exiting credential, forty-four percent of our graduates last year left with a region's diploma. Very proud of that statistic, as well as fifty percent leaving with their career development and occupational studies credential. In terms of placement after leaving Rise Center, sixty-three percent of our graduates went directly into employment, followed by thirty-one percent going into adult services to continue their work with job readiness training. And typically, about thirty-one percent, the majority, go into our Partners in Transition program that I talked about earlier. And then finally, LRE is so very important for what we do in terms of special education. LRE is a least restrictive environment. This is a new metric that we're starting to track this year. You know, how are we preparing students for post-secondary success? How are we building that independence so that when they leave our halls, they're able to navigate their communities successfully in an independent manner? So looking at last year's cohort, from last year to this year, percentage of students moving to a less restrictive environment, thirty-five percent of our students. So if they had a reduction in aid service, that counted in terms of the numerator over the whole student population. Please just share that twenty-two students from last year were able to transition back to their component districts this year. That would be a less restrictive environment. So really being intentional about this work and preparing our students. We tell our student aides all the time, your job is to work yourself out of an assignment. We'll have a new assignment for you, but you're doing your job when you're able to fade those supports that your student can do this work independently. Okay. In closing. I spoke really quickly there, but I felt pressure. Time Bonnie put out there at the beginning. I appreciate that. So, okay. How are we able to do so much? It's really because of our amazing staff. We're a team of two hundred and twenty-five strong, and we couldn't do it without them. They truly care about our students and their successes each and every day, how big and how small. And they are related in this school year to a Jenga tower. Each one is an important block to the strength, the durability, the stability of what we do. We couldn't do it without them. Why do we do it? Because of our amazing students. I have a picture here, kind of full circle. We have our kindergarten graduates with our high school graduates in the same picture. And I just wanted to take this opportunity really to share our why with you. Quick little video of our students with the program.
I feel the magic, magic everywhere. It's all around us, it's in the air. I see the magic, magic we can share. Someone's wondering everywhere. I feel the magic. Can you imagine? I feel the magic. Can you imagine? I feel the magic. I feel the magic.
Okay. That is our why. This little guy in this picture, actually, I'm not gonna show this. You know, he thinks I'm Buddy the Elf. I don't know why. I think it's the height or whatever, so whenever he sees me, he thinks, yeah, it's cute. So just a couple of parent testimonials. I'm not gonna read all these, but I'll share one. These parents, we've asked them to share, you know, something that they appreciate about the Rise Center and the work that's been done. This could have been anonymous. They said, hey, we want you to use our names. I'm just gonna read the one in the middle. So these are current students, families of current students in our program. We even have a graduate in there. The one in the middle from Kim and John Fay. CVS was such a big step for us to take as we live an hour away from the school. That was four years ago, and the only regret we have is that we didn't make the move sooner. The lake has improved incredibly in such a specialized setting. We are so thankful for the teachers and staff that have made these last four years a success. We would recommend this school to anyone. And then I'd like to open up to the board. If you guys have any questions. If you guys have any questions.
Of course, part of my heart is still there. It's just an amazing place for so many things. You're, I know you said you had a reduction in AIDS. Now you're going, moving to the TA. Part of that reduction in AIDS is because of the more TAs in the classrooms?
Absolutely. So our ratios for academic and life skills programming shifted from eight one ones to eight one twos. Our autism program went from a six one one to a six one three. So those numbers are super high this year, which we're proud about. I do expect them to go down next year, but not at that, you know, high of a level.
That's interesting. We'd love to keep updated on that, to see how that's working versus the, versus the AIDS. We are always concerned about what has happened since 2020 with our students and the mental health of our students. And when we see the rise of the numbers, you know, in, in, in rise, some of it's you've expanded to other rooms. Do you think some of it is also the residual effects of what happened in 2020?
Yeah. So, you know, it's so hard to correlate it to the pandemic, and then we have, I did my doctorate in teacher retention, you know what I mean? And the workforce and statistics nationally, we live in a rural area, there's not a lot of resources, right? And I do think absolutely, it definitely correlates the pandemic. We meet regionally with directors of special ed. I find it fascinating to hear what's going on in district and hear about the needs in district. And they mirror, you know, the services and programs we're providing. So I don't know, you know, when it'll kind of plateau or when it'll catch up.
Would you be able to increase some rooms too by 2026, right?
Yeah, that's the plan. I mean, that's half the equation. The other half will be nailed to staff it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that, true. And I know that's always been a problem. Are all your classrooms now with certified teachers or many of them with TA still?
Yeah, great question. So not all of our programs are certified or have certified teachers leading the classroom. We have a few where teachers are, you know, in progress for receiving their certification, or they may be certified in a content area or working towards.
Or the TAs that are at that level that have been there for another years, have still got some with TA.
Oh, we have one or two TAs, but they're, well, more than one or two, let me just think here, but they're in program. And what you're talking about, so this has been a very strategic initiative that we started that Dr. Davies has been very supportive of, where we want to encourage staff, you know, kind of help them remove the barrier of the financial burden of going back to school. If you love working with students with special needs, you love what we do, let us help you become a special ed teacher. So we do have a reimbursement process and MOA in place with the teachers association. And we have a significant number that are taking advantage of it. We want to, you know, flood the market, so to speak, with special educators.
But like you said, it's, it's very difficult. We found here, you know, trying to get special education.
So I'll just jump in and share. So one of the things that we've been doing, and I know from an administrative point of view, because of the change in the transition, we have currently an MOA and a cohort, we've been working with SUNY Plattsburgh through a pre-apprenticeship program. So we have aides who've been with us a long time, who were helping get their, they need college classes, and we're helping with, with literacy and classroom management, the classes they're taking are part of a stackable, stackable credential. Those aides will now be able to be, will now be able to be teacher assistants. We also have an MOA with our teaching, with our, with our CBS United professionals to help pay our teaching assistants who have much experience with us to help them get certified with a stackable credentials as well. So in other words, we're, we're actually investing in our staff. Traditionally, what has happened over the years, we, we have helped a lot of people, a lot of wonderful staff get certified, and then they end up going to the district. I mean, there's the, the modem, we build them, you take them. But it's.
Thank you.
Yeah. But with that said, it's raising the bar across the whole region. Occasionally, we do, that door does swing both ways. I know a good example is Dr. Slattery coming to us. I mean, he was here. But it's a matter of us working together and building that, that highly professional caliber staff who especially have lots of experience. And some of our teaching assistants who are now on the pathway, and some of, many of them have degrees, that we're helping them get that certification. That's just been essential. Matt and his team and our HR, Dr. Bell and team, we've worked very collaboratively with our teachers association and SUNY Plattsburgh to develop its model. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Could I just share two, a couple other quick items? I know Mr. Webenero is not here this evening. I would like, and he is your, your board member as well. I want to thank you for nominating him and having him serve as a member of our CBS board.
It's a permanent position, he doesn't know.
Yes, yes. And he seems, he seems to be really enjoying it. He's been investing in, in some of the professional development activities. He's a great board member. He asks lots of questions. He, he really, you know, cares deeply about supporting your, your students, but also about all the students in, in the whole region. So he's a fantastic board member, and we thank you for his service. He does a great job, and I want to publicly acknowledge him for, for that leadership. And two other quick items too, and we'll be happy to answer any other questions you have. I want to thank Mr. Storms and your board. We'll be sharing a, an exciting event on Friday with Commissioner Ball coming. So we're so proud to be part of that visit as well and that acknowledgement with, with that, that grant and the commissary kitchens and him coming to Peru to start off with and then coming to CBS. So that's exciting. We're proud to, to be part of that, that event. And also, I just want to acknowledge, and I know, Mr. Storms, we shared it to share with your, your board as well, is our 75th anniversary celebration is coming up next Thursday on the 17th. So we do have a press conference at 1:30. The commissioner will be here in the morning. She'll actually be visiting classrooms. Some of her senior team members are here, Deputy Commissioner Angela Lee Johnson Dingle, Assistant Commissioner and Chief of Staff David Frank. And we believe we'll have a few other staffers as well with the commissioner. And then the press event at 1:30 as well, and the public is invited. So we'd love to have some, you attend if you're able. And then we do have a celebration in the evening at Westside Ballroom. We sent, sent out some information about that. It's 5:30 to 8:30 with a program at, at 6:30 PM.
The open house is what, the open house was 11:30 to?
Yeah, and that's at, at the Learning Hub, and the theme is for, it's, it's like a walk through time.
Right. It doesn't make any difference what time we go there.
So nope, between 11 and 3, you're welcome. In the middle of that, we do have the press conference. And the theme for the evening celebration, again, at Westside Ballroom is Diamonds and Down. So we're trying to make it fun. It's not a dinner. It, it is a, a networking event where people can just enjoy and talk with staff and retirees and memories. And we do have a, have a program that we'll be showing, sharing that evening. So we invite all of you to attend. There are, I'll send the, just also resend the information, Mr. Storms. There is a slight ticket price that are available at CBS and Angela, and you can make arrangements for that. But we wanted to also make it reasonable so that, so retirees and our staff and everyone, anyone who wanted to attend would be able to.
We have a rather important event, I think. We have a capital project vote.
You could come and still make it back in time as well.
Make it in the afternoon.
Perfect.
Dr. Davies, I'll hint that I'm the only one that needs to be here.
And good luck with that.
We always like to support you.
Yes. Any other questions?
No, I think we're good.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Thank you all. We appreciate the opportunity, as always.
You're still welcome to stay. You don't want to see our rooms.
You're ready to go on.
You were looking at me? No, no.
No, I'm like, I'm like, buddy, move on. Next thing, sorry, Kara.
Wow. I have to follow that with some really exciting talk about our capital project that the vote is on the 17th. So this is our official public hearing for the capital project. We did have a public information center or session on September 24th. So this is really a recap of that presentation. So why is the district proposing a capital project? This is to address roof infrastructure that's beyond its useful life, to prevent this infrastructure from becoming a health and safety risk. It's currently a maintenance challenge, protecting taxpayers' investment in our school facilities, and of course, providing a safe and productive environment for our students. The scope of the proposed capital project is to apply a 20-year recovery system to hold on out of warranty roofs and update some systems on the roof as well as roof access products. And this is all based on our 2022 building condition survey. So here are some drawings that talk about the roofs that will be addressed. So these purple shaded areas are those that are targeted in this project. You can see that we have some in the elementary school as well as some in the middle high school. We did upload an arch, the official architect's report onto the school website under our capital projects page. Here I'm going to go through just a few photos of the roof issues that we've experienced, which kind of led us down the road to this project. So here are some pictures in the high school, as well as some outer roof membrane issues. Here are some issues in the elementary school. You can see some leaks, some ponding water on the edges of the roof on the top, some flashing issues in ponding water on the top of the roof. And so all of those things in and more will be addressed in this project. So the timeline of the proposed capital project, as we mentioned, October 17th is the vote. It's 1 to 8 PM in the community room. If the vote passes or the project passes, then we look at the design phase through November, and then we have an SED review period through May. And then we really look at the majority of the construction to take place in summer of 2025. The intent here is to have the majority of the construction completed during the summer to impact or to limit the impact on learning. What is the cost of the proposed capital project? The question everybody wants to know. So the total referendum amount is $5,430,000. This referendum proposes the use of the voter approved capital reserve of just over a million dollars. The school tax levy impact of this project is zero due to the use of the capital reserve and our state building aid ratio. So here's the, the proposition that will be shown on the ballot. And then we did get a question from the public about this language at the bottom that talks about, you know, why are we issuing? Why does it talk about this raising of a tax levy on the community when we're saying that the project is no tax impact? This language authorizes the district to issue debt, but the cost of that debt will be offset by the use of the capital reserve and debt service funds that the district already has as well as building aid. So there's no additional impact to the taxpayers. Any questions? You can contact myself or for more construction or facility specific questions, you can contact Matt LaFave. During the public information session, we did receive a question on air conditioners and whether the roofing infrastructure that we're proposing in this project would support the ability to install air conditioning in the future in the buildings. And it would be. However, we don't have like a cost estimate or a timeline, but we will certainly consider air conditioning in future planning. So again, what's next? The capital project vote in the community room on October 17th. Again, you can go to our capital projects website page or follow the QR code, and you can look at those drawings, the architect's report, listen to the podcast, view the flyer, and hopefully we see you on the 17th. Thank you.
So another area that we, we talked about having as well in here was the cell phone policy and was brought up. So I did reach out to other school districts, and it's kind of a, one of those situations where every district's doing it a little bit differently. So some schools have banned phones, cell phones in their middle schools and in their high schools. Others have done where they, where students have to keep them just in their lockers. So it's, it's still kind of up in the air in regards to exactly how it's working out. Most schools are saying that those who are requiring students to keep their cell phones in their lockers are, that seems to be going well. Other schools that have, that have banned cellphone use in their schools are also saying that they're, they're seeing that, you know, there was a little bit, it was more parent concerns in the beginning, but it really has worked out okay. I think it's going to be one of those things we need to keep our eye on and keep watching. And it's one of those situations where I think that it's one of those things we want to reconsider as we get into throughout the school year. There's definitely research that shows that students having their cell phones and having constant contact with their cell, cell phones is, has detrimental effects, or it's one of those situations we need to be really mindful of. But it was brought up, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention. If there's anything else, the board would like me to research on that or bring back to the board. I'd be happy to do either a presentation or bring more information back to you, cause whatever.
We don't have a lot of clarification from the state yet.
We don't, we don't.
I was gonna ask that question. So is, there's legislation potentially, is that?
Yeah, and I think one of the things that we're hearing about that is it's going to be a bit nebulous in regards to banning, not, not saying you can't bring them to school, but maybe what we already do in our middle school, which is they leave them in their locker. So some of that, I, I think it's not going to be as direct as might be helpful. I think, I think it's going to be one of those, put it back to the districts to make, make the decision, is what we suspect after I was in my, at the Congress in Saratoga.
Okay. So like make a rule, but we're not going to tell you what it is?
Correct, yes.
Well, and what's it been, a year and a half? No, a, a little over a year for the middle school, right?
Yeah, this is your.
This is?
Year three, yeah.
Year three. So, you know, maybe an update later on about how it's going, because I know we said whatever, you know, how the middle school is going, and certainly a middle school student is certainly different than a high school student.
We do anticipate there'll be some more information from the governor in November, we're thinking. So maybe we can, you know, I'll keep, keep you informed, and we can also get together with our, our administration to talk about where we are, what we're seeing in high school students as well as middle school students and share with you later on in the school year. So then when we get into that, into the season of looking at our code of conduct, we can, we can have more conversations about it.
I think this is going to be one of those things, at some point, we have to address it, right?
Agreed.
In some way. But a cold turkey approach is probably a, a little traumatic.
I agree.
And, and I'm, I'm really looking at it from a parent perspective, you know, of, I think parents communicate differently with their children than when they're not, right?
For sure.
And so that, there's still that pushback. So I feel like there's a balance somewhere in there that we'll have to work toward.
I agree, and I think that there's good, there's good pieces in place right now in our schools, so we can, you know, share some of those things that are working, that are working, and then maybe, you know, tweak those as we, as we move on.
Is it possible or is it dangerous to include students in this, in a, in a kind of an ad hoc committee evaluative type of process?
Sure.
Throughout the year, assuming the code of conduct update would take place for fall 2025?
Sure. I think that, you know, I think it's very interesting when we have a conversation with the students, when we, when they bring their perspective in, because it's sometimes not as, not as harsh as we think it's going to be. And also, it'll be interesting to hear. So I'll, I'll work with the administration to be able to bring something back to, to the board later on, winter, winter-ish.
Is there language in the other schools that you've looked at about wearable tech also?
Yes. Yep, they've actually, they're, they're not allowed to wear.
A smart watch.
Smart watch and things like that. In some of the more restrictive schools, other schools will still allow that. So it's definitely, it's dependent on district.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a reminder to board members, and I want to give a reminder off to the two, the three that are not here tonight. In November, we will look at that government's document, which I've sent to you. So please take a look at that.
I was so excited.
I know. Actually, I could have used it today when this, when Dr. Slattery was throwing out all these letters.
Okay. And also in super, our, our super eval, our fourth self eval for 2324 from our self evaluation, I have those objectives. Please look, see that you agree with them, or if you want to edit them or change anything, please make sure of that. So we'll have to make sure we get a reminder out to the three board members, because we are going to go with that in November. Okay. Through Association of Teachers.
Hey, just quickly, one second. I wish Shannon Radcliffe the best of luck in the position in CBS, and we are. And we are happy to congratulate Richard Rivas as we look forward to working the firm in the role. Also, we had an update recently from Heather Adams, our NICE SUTT representative for teacher evaluation. And she let us know the guidance from NICE's perspective. The board region is supposed to happen in the end of November as we're all well aware. And after that, still a 60 day comment period. And then the guidance anticipated is not coming out till February. So probably looking at March of any new changes. So therefore, NICE SUTT has recommended we keep our current local agreements minus the student performance measure because that has gone with the window. So that is what P A T is looking to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Reports and communications. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, okay. Oh, I'm gonna skip over that data.
That's fine.
But I worked so hard. Yes, state testing.
So our principals are here tonight to present to you a first look at our three through eight testing and also our regions exams. I'll just note that the the data still is embargoed by the state and we are allowed to discuss it locally. But like we're just not allowed to send out all the parent reports and everything yet until we get the the final approval. So some things to just consider again, like last year, we believe that our students are more than a test score and we really value it looking at the whole child. Three through eight participation continues to increase. However, you know, all regions exams are required to graduate. So of course we have a higher participation rate in regions exams. Folks still feel that COVID is impacting our students and their their performance on these assessments. Also computer based testing versus paper based testing. Like some people think that that impacts the the way that we we take a test. So and all of the data, even if we we like it, we don't like it, it's all information. So it it guides us in our programming, our instruction, how we respond to individual student needs. And again, this is a first look. We haven't even really had time to dig in this, dig into this data as a as a leadership team or with our staff. But those are our next steps for sure.
Good evening. I get excited for this. So we're going to start by taking a look at E L A for grades three through five. And it's really focused on just an overview of all of those grade levels combined. You will see a breakout with each grade level. So at the top, you'll see that that's within our B O Cs district. So that's within C V S. And then below you see how we did just even longitudinally. So starting 2018 going through 2024. So across, looking at E L A as a whole, the intermediate is trending upward by 1.22 percent. We are always looking to increase that further, but we are headed in the right direction. We did exceed the B O Cs in all grade levels in E L A. And we were even with what we call the R I C, the regional information center, which spans from Albany all the way up through the north. It covers multiple counties. So we held even with the R I C in third and fifth grade in E L A. And what was interesting looking at fourth grade is that they maintained the same percentage that third grade did last year. So I would just say that they're holding and they're maintaining that level and.
Mary, just one quick question.
Sure.
The levels, red is one, right?
Yes.
Orange is, there was no.
We're moving towards green.
Yeah, there was no, there was no key on the chart. Just my assumption, but others that don't know that, you know, red, orange, yellow, green.
Yes, we call it a heat.
Kind of a pea green up in the corner.
We call it a heat map. So it's a it's a progression from the darkest red up through green. And that's the span. So we want to head towards the the brightest green. The pea green is edging towards the bright.
And when you say C V S, do you mean like the other component districts?
Yes, that's your component districts, yeah. So you'll hear me say refer to B O Cs because across all R I Cs, you would reference the B O Cs because that's the reference to the component districts. Another way of looking at it, so this gives us a breakdown both with C V S or B O Cs and Peru. So we have our level ones through level four. You see where we have 31.69 percent in level three and 8.43 percent in level four. We have the 30 percent at level one, 29.07 in two. So just to give a sense of the work that we're doing right now is is taking a look at who is where. And basically, so even within each level, you have a cutoff score. So we look to see how many points, how many were this close to moving into a level three? Because we do see movement that way. So that's the type of work we're doing right now. So when we look, and you, this is again where you can clearly see how we did in comparison to the B O Cs being ahead. If we, as we move towards math, again, you see the heat map, so the same color coding. And again, we were above, we were above B O Cs. With with math, we have 40, let's see, we were at 42.62 percent of proficiency in third grade, 48 in fourth and 53 in grade five. And we are trending 1.67 percent upwards. And we exceeded the R I C in fourth and fifth grade. Third grade, again, just looking at different ways of looking at it. What was interesting is that third grade, our third grade and the R I C held at their percentages from year to year, and the B O Cs dropped from 49 to 41. So again, even though we want to see that growth and we want to see that increase in percentage, it was interesting to me that third grade held. There could be a number of reasons for that, you know, just at Peru, we use Intimath. We know that it's heavy with reading. That's a big jump between second grade and third grade. So our teachers, that's something that they're taking into account in preparing our students. So again, just to take a look at the comparison, these charts are a little easier to to read. So with Peru, 36.45 percent in level three, 11.45 in level four. So that was nice to see if you compare the greens between B O Cs and Peru. And again, looking at to see with those levels twos and those level ones, how can we move those numbers up into the green? We had, we had our new science test last spring and it was definitely a challenge. We, just to give a sense, during COVID, we started with mystery science for our curriculum. One of the benefits is it was something that could be delivered virtually. It was, it has a strong platform that way. But overall, as we started to look at the standards and look at the types of questions that our students were going to be facing, we did grow some concern that that we need to add it. So we did send some teachers to Franklin as Ex B O Cs for science training. And I'm actually very pleased to share that this past summer, it was a building project for the intermediate. And we now have supplemental curriculum finders to help with science. Now, across the state proficiency is low as far as science goes. But what I will say is that Peru scored above B O Cs and above the R I C. So there is that that positive news in there. And I think we'll be, I know we'll be even stronger based on the work that that our teachers have done and they've had a chance to see see the test.
And the purple is people who opted out of testing?
Yes, yes, they they did not test. Now, this, science was the last test that we took. I actually have another slide that shows the participation rate for each. And it's just interesting to see because what you're going to see is E L A was the highest, math was second, and then science across fifth grade. So. It is, it is very challenging. I will say I was so proud of our students though because they worked so hard and they tried so hard. And some of them were sustaining attention for multiple. I was proud with their perseverance. So here you'll see some of these points I've hit on already, but you'll see with the participation. It's always, I'm always keeping a very close eye on that. Third grade, 93 percent for E L A, 92 percent for math. We are aiming for 95 percent or higher for participation. Fourth grade, 87 and 81. That was a little bit of a dip for our fourth grade math from what we've seen in previous years. And fifth grade is actually bumping up, 86 percent, 85 percent for math, and then 82 percent participation for science. This does impact our our scores and it is hard to gauge within B O Cs or the R I C who's participating. Some, the students that don't take it, we don't know exactly. We can predict where they would land and how they're doing. But it can be hard to compare scores between districts. I'm always cautious in that because we don't know each other's participation rate and who's taking. So it's just something to consider. So I've outlined some of our strengths. And I will just say that we are continually looking and aiming between five to 10 percent growth across all grade levels in a year. We also will be taking a very deep dive and careful look at students with disabilities with regards to proficiency and what we can do to best support. So just to share a couple, we were just getting the results, but we have to make plans and take action before we even get the results. So some of the things that we have done is our instructional schedule is very mindful of making sure that all of our students have access to social and science, that our services aren't competing with those blocks of time. We are doing writing cross curricular. We have moved away, a lot of the feedback from our teachers was that we want to move away from a walk to read model and start to get back to individual classrooms. And so we've got a blended model this year. In third grade, that's our first chance with with our students coming in. We really wanted to focus on literacy. So we have maintained a 20 minute intensive skills time, and that's across all sections, including our COs. We also have push in math and E L A occurring at all grade levels. And we have also added, we've switched from the language of an R T I block to a what I need block. So we're going with the win model. And during that time, we're still in the process of getting those groupings up and running. But the idea there is that you could have span from intervention up through enrichment. So really taking a look at what each student needs and students could move and go to a different teacher so that we we can best meet them where they are at. I've mentioned that we have our new science curriculum or our supplemental materials that we're drawing in. We've also moved to having individual sections in fifth grade. Research does indicate that as much as it can feel comfortable with specialization, the most effective thing we can do is highly effective instructional strategies. So we have broken back out and we are, so all of our teachers are teaching all subject areas. And we continue in our data analysis and our M T S S meetings have been very productive so far. And we're also very excited and thankful for the addition, Mrs. Rivas of Pace and the intermediate and the work of Mrs. Berry as our coordinator. And also we've expanded our T C I S to the number of people that are trained with that. So I think that we're doing a lot of good things and we'll see those results. Thank you.
Okay, hi, everybody. So we're going to talk about some middle school testing results and you're going to see very similar reports. So we're going to start with the E L A and we're looking at the donut, if you will. Again, we're comparing the C V S data to middle school data. Color wise, you know, the the goal as far as the donut, we want to see more green and light green compared to yellow and red. So that there's two shades of green represent students that are in level three and four, which are proficient. The red and yellow is levels one and two, which is non proficient. So then when you move to the bottom of that bar graph, that's what you're looking at, the the combined percentage of those two colors in each category, proficient, non proficient. So similar, but we did not reach the same level as, you know, the C V S in this case for E L A when looking at the entire middle school. The heat map, again, just like in the intermediate, as far as three through five, this again shows, you know, if you look at the colors, it's similar to C V S. You can see as the, you know, the reds become more orange or oranges become more yellowish. That's that's a good thing. So again, we're talking about the percentage of students that are proficient. So if you look at, you know, the 2024, the farthest to the right, those percentages are the number of students that were at level three and four percentage wise. Again, similar to our B O Cs, but not quite what we wanted at this point. We talk about math. Again, going back to our donut, you know, the exact same situation that I described as far as proficiency and non proficiency. You know, what I failed to mention is with the the donut, as far as Peru, the purple does represent students that have not tested. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that in later slides. But again, going back down to the bottom, I think, you know, again, we've got some work to do to move more kids out of that red, that big red bar over to the gray and blue. And then here's the heat map for math. Again, trying to move colors to more yellow, green. So we did do a good job, especially you'll note in the on the bottom heat map, grade seven went from 25.25 percent to 46, so that was a really big jump. And again, you're talking about different cohorts of kids. This is not following the same group of students. That just gives you a little bit of my idea of the trend. And then like Mary said, science was brand new. This one, I think, was, you know, a difficult test for all schools. Definitely that number 85 percent is discouraging to see. But again, with a new test, I think our teachers and students, you know, have a test that they need to get familiar with because we totally moved away from where eighth grade students would have to actually perform experiments. That is no longer, this is strictly a computer based test, where they do some investigations during the course of the year, but it's not necessarily part of the the testing date.
Does the opt out for that account for those that are, like if you're taking a year ahead? Because there's some eighth graders that are a year ahead in science, right? Aren't they taking earth science already?
So.
Do they count as opt out?
Yeah, when you talk about math and science, so your algebra students that are and your students that take living environment, they don't necessarily opt out. They don't take the task because they're taking a region. So they're exempt from the state test because they're taking a region. So they're not included in that.
So they're not included in it at all?
Correct. I mean, I don't, they are included in the regions data, but not in the.
Okay, I was just wondering.
So again, brand new test. And again, this just gives you a good, a really good picture of, I think, the level of difficulty that this test took because of a similar drop when you when you look at our district or or B O Cs as a whole. Just a much different test. And then this just gives you a little bit of a snapshot of following a grade where we're comparing different cohorts. This, the top two charts, as you move right to left, shows the seventh grade cohort from last year when they were in sixth grade on the far right, 2023, to where they tested last year. And I think the thing that I want to draw your attention to is we made some good progress in getting kids to take the test. So our students did some, or excuse me, our staff did a great job of incentivizing our students to try the state test. So you can see that that purple is much smaller when you go to 2024, the furthest block of data on the on the far left, whether you're talking about math or E L A for both. Significant drop. Significant drop as far as the number of students that are now taking the test. And then again, some of this is review, but like I said, the longitudinal charts show the significant gains in student participation. We did make some proficiency gains specifically in math, seven. There were also gains in ELA six and seven. And then when you talk about that, that door between proficiency and non-proficiency, we did have more students move to proficiency overall compared to students that went through the door the wrong way, if you will, in both ELA and math. So I mean, that's a positive. And then we're using upcoming data meetings to help identify standards where students struggled. Stephanie Sorrel will be here in November to talk with our teachers at the middle school to just take a little deeper dive into that data. And then finally, we are starting to make some headway into Panorama to help us identify, you know, the data in a, in a one-stop shop. So we're hoping that some interventions that come out of that will help us see some gains in our test scores.
Regents exams. So in, in full disclosure, I went to Scott in a panic with some just raw data, and I said, I think we're going to have some problems with the Regents exams. However, just looking at, you know, we're starting with, with ELA, which is always our strength. Our team has always done a good job, at least in my time in this position. Kind of pleasantly, not at all surprised, but to see the data presented in a different manner such as this, we were doing pretty well for, for our region. It doesn't mean we stopped there. It doesn't mean we, we don't stop looking into data and our practices and using best practice. However, you can see there's a significant, and looking at the, the data here, there's a significant jump in our ELA compared to the region. As you can see, they traditionally do pretty well. And in ELA, again, eighty-six is down a bit from CBS as far as proficiency goes, but at the same time, we are getting our kids through the exam. Algebra one, this was a new exam, which was heavily based in reading, and I think that's going to be a trend that the instructors across all these exams have really brought to my attention is these exams are a high, a high reading level, maybe higher than a lot of our students are walking into the room with, and that's significantly going to impact some of their progress. But again, you can see here, a new exam and pretty typical compared to the region. Algebra two, this is kind of one of our places that we always celebrate as well. They do a very good job. You can see a level two, I believe it was two students that, that comes out to. Otherwise, our students are doing very well in algebra two. Our teaching team is great there, and they do a nice job across the region, or excuse me, across their delivery of, their curriculum to our students compared to the region. Geometry, that was a place you can clearly see where we do have a, you know, a bit of a dip, a dip from last year and compared to the region. And again, I'll get to that in later slides as to, you know, the actions that we're taking and the things that I believe the district in, in general, for all of the buildings, between MTSS, between working with Garth Larson, the literacy briefs that we're being briefed on and also trained to bring back to our students are going to make an impact. And you can see our, our math exams with this heat map were, were pretty cool. Earth science. This was, this was, for our earth science teachers, they were very pleased with how this particular group did and how it panned out. And I'll, I'll say that I think there's a lot to be said for moving earth science to the tenth-grade level and having them go through the, the living environment and then going into this course. And also, you'll notice ninety-seven, we graduate about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty. That means the other thirty students are saying, you know, you only need another, you need one other science credit to graduate high school. Those other thirty students are saying, I don't need a Regent's credit in, in earth science. I can take another science, and luckily for us, we offer that. And the students who did decide to take this course, obviously, were, were serious about doing well. And this is a new, again, this transition to the new exam, again, another new science exam. You can see a little bit of a dip here, and again, the teachers, immediately when they got the exam, they ran it down to me, and they're like, do you know what that word means? And I was like, I'm not so sure I do. And they said, we didn't, we don't either, and we didn't teach it. So there was a lot of that that went on, I mean, in full disclosure. And it was a very high, in just my glance over it and the instructor's glance over it, a very high reading level. Chemistry, again, another dip there, and, and the teachers were a little concerned with this as well and, and realized that there's a little bit of work to be done. And I think that we, as a district, have taken appropriate steps to do that work even before this data came out. Physics, two. One made it, one didn't. But we got two in the building, so that's, I mean, from a class of twenty kids, if two show up for physics, I guess we're doing all right. And you can see our science exams, one put all together again, you know, and, and a huge advantage for a high school is that there's no opting out at the Regents exams. U.S. history, little dip as far as the region goes, and I will disclose, that's pretty typical for us, though we're going to be right around there, and they're taking appropriate measures through the approaches that the other two principals mentioned and, and the district approaches that I think are going to be highlighted here a little bit later. Global history, this test did change over, not this year, but the previous year. And again, close to the region, obviously, we want to decrease our twos and ones, but do you have, you know, there's a lot of green there as well to celebrate. And if you look at how we're doing here compared to the region, we are doing well. And just as far as we go, you know, regionally, Peru is ahead of the RIC or close to the mean. You saw that in the data. Our teachers are still, you know, I think, I think there's a, a struggle with hearing what comes from the state, Blue Ribbon Commission, and all these options that are going to be rolled out for the graduates. Yet, we really haven't heard much, as you all know. So I think they're very frustrated with that. At the same time, they do realize that they have an exam to teach to these stu-, or to prepare the students for, but also need to develop good humans, and I think they're doing a really good job of balancing that in the high school. Making progress and moving students to proficiency building-wide, gains in algebra, that was, they were really excited about that. I was excited to see it when we were compared to the, the region, especially with a new exam. ELA, once again, strong, and significant gains in earth science. And you know, all, I think all, when you look at these tests, all areas have an opportunity to grow. Learning target opportunities that we're working on is close as this Friday. MTS, MTSS interventions and a systematic approach to student development. I was at MTSS roundtables with some other colleagues today, and I, I think the district has, was proactive in putting in place the exact things that we need to do in order to grow. Any questions for the high school?
Is this just June data or is this June and August?
This is just June. Good question, thank you.
So some of those students retested in August, and we don't have that data.
If we would have added it there, we would have had, had growth, no doubt about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Great question. They weren't, August isn't ready yet.
Why, I assume, it's like, wow, that's really quick, but we know how the state works.
Yeah. You know, we have to do, work with the students the previous year, you know, like in three through eight. You work with a kid that had the test last year. What you have to do is look at the strengths and deficiencies of the curriculum or overall, because those kids took the test and they're on and beyond, you know?
But a piece of advice that I could give the state would be, we probably really need to make a level of mandate on three-through-eight testing like we do with Regents exams. Until they do that-
Yeah.
-and put the teeth there-
Yeah.
-we're going to see results like this, unfortunately.
So thank you all. It is, yeah.
So, oh, I need my glasses. So now what are our next steps? You've heard some folks mention some work with Stephanie Sorrel from Bosse, so she's scheduling some deeper data dives with each, with each team so that they can look at the trends and the strengths and what our needs are. Let's see, like Matt just said, we were, a lot of us were at an MTSS roundtable training today, so that's looking at multi, multi-tiered systems of support for our students. So looking at giving them whatever they need, whether it's enrichment or intervention. This Friday, we're going to learn how to prioritize standards with Garth Larson, so we're starting that standards work, and we'll, we'll use our assessments also to help prioritize what standards we need to help with. From there, we'll go to writing effective learning targets, and today, all the principals rolled out, we're starting to roll out effective teaching strategies. So what strategies directly impact student outcomes based on evidence and research? And we have, you've heard about Panorama, it's a, it's a dashboard early warning data system, so we can, we can go to the system and see all of our students' data. So, and, and it also has like banks and banks of interventions there too. So if we're struggling to find out what works, we can kind of check the tier that we need, the subject that we need, and lots of ideas will come up at our fingertips. Any questions?
No, thank you very much.
And I have to just also compliment administrators on how they worked today on effective teaching strategies. They all did professional development on that, and it was really an outstanding job.
Right. Thank you. Reports and communications, any discussion?
One I wanted to bring up to you is that one of our reports, that one from our nurses is not in there this-
Oh, that's right.
...this month, and we're going to be working with our nurses, with Mrs. Rabdo as well as Mrs. Rebus to reestablish and looking at that report and seeing what we need in that report. So I, I do want board members to take a look at that previous report. I'll send it to you this week. If there's anything in that report that you're thinking is not necessary, this, these are old, the report that we're sharing right now with the board are old reports that were actually established when Kathy Phillips left and I took the job on. That's how long we've been doing that particular report. At that time, administrators were also providing a report, and this is one that's kind of stayed there. So I'll, I look forward, I'll, I'll remind you and put that out to you, but I think it's one that if, we do need to revamp that report so that it's a little bit clearer and make, whatever we need to report to the board needs to be consistent across all four buildings, so I'm going to be working with them on that. So just as a heads-up.
Okay. And I did, I do like the tech report. That's interesting to see the, the process. Thank you. And really thanking the, the robbery for money from middle school. That's great. Any other discussion? Motion to accept and approve reports in communications?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Graves? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Fixed assets, any discussion? New business all the way down through, no discussion? Okay, motion to approve the new business incentive items seven, A through D.
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell? Second, Mrs. Graves? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Personnel? Any discussion? Go through all those pages. No?
No.
No discussion, okay. Motion to approve personnel consent items eight, A through K.
Motion.
Second, Mrs. Mitchell? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Congratulations.
Congratulations?
Yes, congratulations. Sorry, Mr. Manchester. Okay. Unfinished business, two of our leave of absence. This is the second reading, isn't it?
Yes.
Do each one of those-
Separate, please.
Separate?
Right.
Any discussion, questions on that? Okay, motion to approve nine A.
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Peters? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Mural, I think we're, we're still in discussion. We're trying to find a grant on that.
We are. We're working on that, and, you know, there's been some great conversation about that. And once we get a little bit further down the road with some funding up to it, it is going to be quite expensive, but we're working pretty hard on trying to figure out ways to secure that kind of funding.
Yeah, something, you know, we talked about something historical, and then Mr. Lovinero had mentioned something fun on the primary, but I think key focus at first was maybe something historical, possibly on the Cracker Box where everybody goes by.
Next time you drive into this side of campus and you're coming in through the high school, just take a look over at the intermediate building, and if you look, the, the Cracker Box wall is this big wall, and that might really be a place for something historical on our school. And then we, as time goes on, we can, we can look at some of the others. But that's kind of what we're thinking, but obviously, we're in that, obviously, a place where we need to secure funding and then also bring some ideas to the board once we, we, we set work to do that.
It's a dollar amount, so that we're aiming for-
Well, we're, we're, we're looking right now. I mean, it would all depend on our size and that kind of thing. If we were to do the whole wall, it would be quite, it would be quite-
Well, I forgot what-
Yeah, what was shame, I forgot what, yeah.
It was around thirty thousand.
And, and his big thing in shame's line.
And we're only comparing it to other works that have been done, so it, it would be dependent on-
Well, that don't think it was nineteen thirty-eight, so, you know, four years, maybe we'll get something. And that was only discussion, we don't have to roll out anything.
Yeah, but I think we'll have more, more information.
Okay. Any questions on Appendix A? I think that cleaned a lot of things up.
It did. Kudos to Sherry.
Yeah.
We did went around and around to that one a bit, but I think it would really help when, when we go into negotiations with PAT to be able to have that clean-
Yeah.
-clean language moved over.
So motion to adopt the following resolution, resolved at the Board of Education, accept the terms and conditions of revised and random agreement with Peru Association of Teachers. Regarding Appendix A, authorize the superintendent of schools to execute such MOA and take all actions necessary in behalf of the employer in effectuating the terms of the MOA. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Graves? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, this is our first reading of that. Any discussion? We'll do nothing on that because it's only the first reading. And then V, Rural Schools Conference.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, I thought you meant that you have to take it for action. You at least have to approve your first reading.
Okay. Oh, okay. Motion to, yes, motion to conduct a first reading of policy. Forty-three, twenty-one point four, independent educational evaluations.
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Peters? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Rural Schools Conference, I don't know if anybody's interested in going to the winter conference in Saratoga. We went this summer. That's good information.
It's a Friday, Saturday.
I haven't told them. Have to look. Shouldn't be.
Thursday, Friday.
Thursday, Friday, yeah.
Wednesday, Thursday.
No? No?
No, thank you.
And then you'll have to check with the other three members?
Thank you. We're running on October, just need to, they should roll open soon, and a member of me, I should remember it's a little bit later, so-
Yeah.
-to get everybody's schedule.
Nobody was interested in the-
But the board was okay, there are people interested, that we could move the board with?
Yes. Yep, please. Okay, so motion to establish attendance at the Rural Schools Association, twenty-twenty-four Winter Conference, we held December fourth and fifth in Saratoga Springs, if anyone is so interested.
No interest of the members and attendants, and I'll contact the others if I get, and get the names, we can run that back if they remember anyway.
Yeah. Motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Mitchell? Second, Mrs. Graves? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Bus purchases, these were all approved with our budget? Any discussion?
This is to discuss for the proposition for next-
Next time, right.
Yep.
They were very similar, though, weren't they, to the ones we bought?
Uh, yes.
Little bit, little bit more.
Yeah, they go out every year.
Yeah.
Leonard Buss is, is willing to give us, if we can at least express our intent in purchasing, they're willing to give us a warranty on some of the body of the buses for any commitment. Yes.
Okay. So then, and they're all diesel-powered at this point because we still have, still don't have a lot of traction from, or electric, but we are thinking about making sure we have at least one electric-
Yeah, we're looking into that aspect of it as well, to see if, if we were able to get kind of moving in that direction with one place to-
Charge. Level three charger? I'm asking.
For sure. I don't know, I'm not sure. I know, know that they think that-
Do you love a speed of fast charger?
No. We're, we're thinking that it, our, the recommendation to us is if we get on the grid now, when everyone else get, will already be on the grid, that that'll be important, and that's what we're, we're trying to establish that right now, but we've gotten kind of mixed feedback on that, so we still have work to do there. But it might be advantageous to, we've got a place for it to go. But it might be advantageous to, we've got a place for it to go, so that's the important one.
I know, we have one spot that has the capacity for a charger on the existing grid, so.
So that's where it's going to go.
Well, and this is, I think this is- Yeah, and this is good to at least get this moving so that we're proactive and, and-
It's served us well in the past, just getting that stuff. Well, and keeping, and, you know, and while we can, I hate to say it, but while we can still get diesel buses, we should be getting diesel buses.
Or if we can get them with a warranty, or what we're going to pay for them, without a warranty, it doesn't seem like-
Okay, motion to present and submit a bus proposition to the board and the district at a twenty, twenty-two-five annual meeting for the purchase of three diesel-powered buses.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Peters, second, Mrs. Mitchell, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Don't, communication, no discussion?
Yeah, so we're hoping to get together a group of people for the communications committee. We're hoping that possibly we can meet on, was it Tuesday? Yes, sorry, I left it in my other room. Tuesday, possibly in the morning?
Tuesday, like next Tuesday?
Well, we have, we have a group of people right now that are, that are-
Thank God.
So we have Sarah and Steve and Ed, who are on communications committee for the board, and then we're also looking to try to get in our representative we work with from CBS, having her come in, she's doing a lot of really good work right now with our, our people. Nick as well, and then Karen Shannon, maybe we'll see which one is able to come to that as well. And that way, we could have some conversations of approving communication in our district, ways to enhance different modes of communication in our district. I think it's kind of exciting, I think, what we could be doing. So I'm just trying to, and I, I'll also send out an email because you're not all here, but if there is a possibility, maybe a morning meeting, I realize that you might not be able to, but maybe you can, go and look at the schedules.
Tuesday, well, it depends on the time, so I teach it to me at two-nine in the evening.
Okay, sure.
And maybe we could do it before, and we'll kind of like-
It's fine.
Okay.
Good, good.
Because I know that-
And I'll, I'll put out a way to, if you guys can give me some additional feedback on, on the time, so I'll ask the three of you, and then you can give me that time, make another time of a work maybe to, that doesn't work. We were just, we're just trying to come up with a time, and maybe we could also do things remotely, we wouldn't have to bring everybody in for it, we can just do it as a, a remote meeting, and then might, might help with people's schedules a little bit too. So, we do think it'd be good to do that.
We're anxious to get the, the BOSIs person that's doing the Facebook page up, because I think there's another district using that person, and they've got a lot of information out there.
So Olivia's all-new portion, right? Can you share a little bit about like Olivia's role with the, with the Facebook, with our, with our website, compoia?
Yeah, so she's, she oversees all of her social media accounts and schedules posts, posts out. She's in district every Tuesday, that's why we're trying to target Tuesday for the meeting, but she schedules our regular Facebook posts, Instagram posts, she updates the photographs on the website, and she creates other content, media content for us to push out on those platforms as well.
So, just so the rest of the board knows, if there's any comments or, or questions you have about communication that you'd like to have addressed, either share with other members that are going to be at the meeting, or possibly share with me, and I will make sure it's something we address and have conversations about. We'll create an agenda, a cabinet, a committee, and so we'll, we'll, but we'll reach back, I'll reach back out with all of you with some possible dates.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. I'm glad I was in on a committee of crowd.
No, you're not.
I don't think there were any public, nothing, okay. No, no public comment?
No.
Okay, and we don't need an executive session, and I'm sorry that we ran so late. We did have quite a few reports, and they were important, so. Attorney?
Motion.
Second. Okay, you got it, all in favor?
Aye. It was very weird when you weren't here, like, we can't unmute. There's no way unmuted.
Someday I'll get a call.